I'd like to call to order the public work session of the Mawa Board of Education for June 12th, 2019. Would you please take over?
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Copley. Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Ms. Conoco. Dr. Morthee. Mr. Windrickowitz. Ms. Secone.
Here.
And Ms. Barrett.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on June 12th, 2019 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Mr. Gallo, would you like to lead us in salute to the flag? Would everyone please rise? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recess to executive session? Mr. Kizmarsky seconded by Mr. Gallo. We will be back momentarily. This won't be very long.
See about that.
But wait, did we just tell one matter I wanted to?
No, we're not going to discuss that tonight.
Well, Ms. Morthee's here.
Do you know why I didn't text you or call you? You know why? Because it's a...
It's a what? I appreciate the cultural sensitivity.
Thank you. May I have a motion to reconvene? Public session. Mr. De Silva seconded by Ms. Secone. Thank you. Agenda questions? Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open the public, to the public? Mr. De Silva seconded by Ms. Secone. Thank you. Do we have any agenda questions? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay. We have a motion to close to public. Ms. Secone seconded by Mr. Gallo. Dr. Shown, do you have a report first?
I do. Brief as it may be, but I do. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce our new supervisor for technology integration. Ruth Davis, if you would say it just for one minute and just wave. Everybody say, "Hi Ruth."
Hello Ruth.
Hi Ruth.
Ruth was appointed at our last board meeting. She had a commitment that evening and I had told the board that she would come this evening. I thank our administrators and our supervisors here this evening in support. I'm sure it's going to be wonderful. Your references described you as a rock star, so we're going to hold you to that. All right. A couple of things, just some dates to remember. Eighth grade promotion is Thursday, June 20th at Ramapo Ridge at, I want to say 6:30. High school graduation is Friday, June 21st, and that's at 6:00 PM. And of course, very important, our barbecue for our district staff will be held on June 24th, probably beginning about 12 o'clock after we take care of some district things prior to that. Two other things, I want to send out a huge shout out to the Mawa Schools Foundation for two reasons. And not in order of priority, but both equal significance. The first is, is that the Mawa School Foundation just notified a number of our teachers and staff members that they have funded $69,819.17 toward grants for teachers, which is absolutely amazing. And all of that would not be possible without people supporting the foundation with their volunteer dedicated efforts. And a perfect example of that was the Mawa School Run that took place where they were able to raise over $40,000 during that event. The MEA was instrumental in promoting that event. Our principals were instrumental in promoting their staff to come and run and to invite the kids. But that money just goes back to all of you and to all of our kids. And it is, it is just amazing tonight for many reasons, when we all work together toward one common goal. And the foundation absolutely did that beautifully, as did all of us working together. Finally, I would like to turn this portion of the meeting over to Dr. Dittoro, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, and our high school principal, John Pascal. We think it very appropriate, as we work into a one-to-one environment at the high school, after a lot of thoughtful years of planning, that Mike and John both give the public a little bit of an oversight as to what has been accomplished this year through the efforts of our staff and how the summer will unfold and what a little bit of next year will look like in a high school environment. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mike. He doesn't need that. Not until the end. Up to you. Oh, you know what, Kyle?
Mike?
Use the mic.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible, but there's a lot to be excited about and there's a lot of work that's been done over the past year that we wanted to showcase in the next couple of minutes. The way that we want to do it is really talk about where we were, where we are right now, and where we want to go. Where we are right now has a lot to do with the people who are up on the screen right there. I don't expect you to read all the names, but what I wanted to, for you to note is, there were a large number of staff throughout the district that volunteered their time to come and share with us their feelings, their needs, their wants, as it's specific to technology. That information from that committee drove a lot of the work that we have done this year. We're going to continue to utilize those professionals and the boots on the ground and all the people who have the experience and the wherewithal of, this is what's working, this is what's not working, this is what we need, and this is what we want. So I put that up on the board to start to frame the conversation because during those committee meetings, we got a chance to talk about programs throughout the district. We got a chance to talk about the effectiveness of the facility, the effectiveness of the machines that we have throughout the district, our Wi-Fi and so much more. What we were able to do from their feedback was really categorize the work that we were going to do this year and into next. The work that we did this year was... There was a wide variety of things that happened this year. One was they really built the foundation, or they reinforced the foundation of our district. A large amount of work went into the infrastructure of our Wi-Fi. A large amount of work went into the machines that are in the buildings. And a large amount of work went into our professional development for our teachers. We're going into a very exciting place with technology and technology integration in our classrooms. And we have to understand and be cognizant of the players that are involved, where they are, what they're comfortable with, and how we can help them along the way. So the work was done throughout the district and it was specific to the schools. So the professional development was really identified or really detailed to what the schools need with the programs and the population that they served. That's something that we are extremely excited about and something that we're going to continue to work on. The technology committee is something that we're going to utilize again next year and something that we're going to build on for the future. What I wanted to talk to you about along the lines of the big picture items, we have a one-to-one initiative that is something that we're very proud of. We have a modified one-to-one at the middle school and Mr. Pascal and his team have done a lot of work at the high school. And I wanted him to take a chance or have a chance to talk to you about where they're at with that process and how they're going to roll that out this summer to their students.
Thank you. Okay. We have taken all of the information that we have created for the one-to-one initiative rollout and placed it on the website so it's easily accessible to the public. We will also have that information on the real-time portal for students and parents, as well as email information to them as we, as we go along. So if you go to the high school webpage, under the Academics tab, there's the one-to-one initiative, and we have listed there a variety of items. I guess, let me just scroll down here. You'll see there's a Technology Handbook. It's about 16 pages or so. Most people have, most people have reviewed that, okay? Pretty much everything you need to know is in this handbook. And then what we did is we took parts of the handbook and we broke it out because I know there are pieces that are important to our families in the community. So our educational goals are listed. And what, what we hope to do is use the technology to enhance instruction so that students are able to solve complex problems, communicate effectively with others, think critically, be creative and innovative, all items that go along with our educational goals and objectives. And so that's the, the first box that you would see here. The ISTI standards for students are listed, frequently asked questions, and maybe it's going to open up. There you go. So what, you know, why did we choose a device? How much is the insurance? What happens if I forget my laptop? All those kinds of things are listed there, okay? Again, those are also found in the handbook. And then our distribution. So right now, we are going to distribute computers, starting with grade 12 on August 20th, juniors on the 21st, grade 10 on the 22nd, and then at freshman orientation, the grade 9 will receive their laptops, okay? We will let students know about this at the end of this week and through email and social media blasts. We will also have the availability to pick up laptops Thursday and Friday of the first week of school.
So if someone were to miss, if their parents, if family's away on vacation, will be...
Not a problem. Okay? And if, for example, like if you're, if you're a senior and you're away and you, let's say you missed the first day, we'll, we'll make arrangements so that you can even come the second or third day. Even though we broke them out by classrooms and by grade level, we did that so there were lines wouldn't be long and people could get in and people can get out. In order to get your laptop computer, parents will have to answer four questions on real time, as well as students, and basically their, yes, I understand I'm getting a computer to use for instructional purposes. Yes, I understand they have to follow the district's acceptable use policies. Yes, I understand they have to return the computer at the end of the summer. And yes, I understand my child will have email and internet access. The technology department has also provided a support email so that students can email if they're having an issue, and we can assist kids as we, as we move along. So everything is here on the website. It'll be, this information will also appear on the real-time portal. There'll be a variety of places for students to, to be able to access that information. We're really excited. We're really excited about the opportunity to move to be a one-to-one. The teachers are very excited. The seniors are very upset that they didn't get the computers. The other classmen, the other classmen are excited. And so really, on behalf of the high school administrative team, the faculty and the students, I'd really like to thank the Board of Education and the central office administrators because without your help and your guidance, this really wouldn't be possible for kids. And it's been a long time coming and we're very happy and excited.
One more thing that I want to bring to your attention is all the work that we're doing is really grounded in, in our goals. And I know, I'm sure you can't read it in the back, these are housed on our website. And the goals really entail using technology in these innovative practices to be, to allow the students to be collaborative, to allow, to have the technology innovative practices as instructional tools and allow us to communicate not only with each other, but with, with our community. So all of our work is really grounded under these specific tenants. And then the, the schools are making school-specific goals that are specific to that population. Sue DeVito, who is our technology supervisor, put together a great slideshow that really encapsulates the work that is being done at all different levels. What I would love for you to do while you're watching this video is to look at it through a couple of different lenses. Number one, like I said before, we're not doing technology for technology's sake. We're doing technology for the experiences. And those experiences, we're trying to allow the technology to have the students explore, have the students create, have the students problem solve. Those three experiences, if we can have technology allow them to do that, we feel that that's, that's a tremendous success. So as you're looking through all the different experiences that you're seeing, from K all the way through 12, hopefully you see a diverse number of experiences, but also how it gets incrementally more rich and higher level of rigor each time.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, John. If I may for a second, Carlos, before you, before you leave. A lot, well, not leave, I mean, I didn't know if you were going to take a walk somewhere or... I did, I did, because, because a lot of the work that people see is what they see. And a lot of the work that makes it happen is, are those things that take place behind doors and behind screens. And Carlos and his team have been absolutely and completely phenomenal. And we wouldn't be at this point with a presentation ready to accept all of these machines, grade 6 to 12, if not for you and your team. So thank you. Happy birthday, by the way. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mike. John and our administrators, except for, of course, Lisa and Mike, and supervisors are welcome to go home and be with your family. Thank you for being here to support Ms. Davis. But you're welcome to leave. Okay. That's nice. Go, go.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, do you have a report for this evening?
Yes. Just one item to record on this evening. I wanted to highlight one of the items that's on the agenda. This is Agenda Item 17-Q. This Agenda item establishes the William &amp; Francis Backus Scholarship. It was notified earlier in the year that in the last will and testament to Ms. Backus, who passed away in April 2018, a portion of her estate would be left to the district. This is going to be left for the, a scholarship opportunity for a graduating senior. Earlier this month, I met with the executor of the estate, Ms. Backus' goddaughter, Mr. Giliata, to discuss the details of the scholarship, which will be available for the first time to a graduate from the class of 2020. On behalf of the district, we thank the family for their extreme generosity with this scholarship and the request that they left us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything for this evening?
I do not. I'm just excited about the ratification, the potential ratification for the MEA contract this evening.
Thank you. As we all, thank you.
This evening, my report, I want to congratulate all the Honor Society inductees and the scholarship winners for our district. And also want to let everyone that know that the Mawa Schools Foundation has elected a new executive board for the 2019-2020 year. And that'll be Mary Beth Duffy will be the president. There'll be three vice presidents, Kate Kizmarsky, Jamie Brisby, and Karen Robatar. The secretary will be Allison Bongiarni, and Jeff Lipkin will be the treasurer. And that is it that I have, is that all that I have for... Sure. The Ramapo Ridge Future Problem Solvers took place at the University of Massachusetts Amherst. So from Thursday, June 6th to Sunday, June 9th, the Ramapo Ridge Middle School Future Problem Solvers traveled to the University of Massachusetts Amherst for an international competition on the topic of de-extinction. Students attended the competition with Nikki Van Ness, Diana Burkle, as well as students and staff from Mawa High School. The attending Ramapo Ridge students were Emily De Silva, Emily C. Jacobo, Seta... You gave me this list with names. Thank you. Sagajian, Kalen Brisby, Claire Lee, Sakith Madali, Cameron Sanchez, Molly Fear, Natalie Morgan, Pranav Pudda, Ryan Stanford, Mason Anton, Arnev Tadu Ten Dulkar. We are so proud of all our participating students. We are excited to share that three of our students placed in the competition. Congratulations to them. That is all I have for this evening. Do we have any board committee reports this evening?
For Policy Committee on 17-V and W, we continue to be buried. So we have 38 policies and regulations for first reading and 33 for second reading and adoption. So yeah, we've been busy and we're, we're getting there. We're, we're getting there. We're not done yet, but we're getting there.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Mike, you don't have a report yet? I was waiting.
I'm doing my negotiations report before we introduce 17-CC.
That's appropriate.
I do have a curriculum committee before my remark.
How does he have a remark before my report?
No, go ahead.
You can do your report.
Go ahead.
So we saw this, we saw the technology slideshow and one of the people who were in the meeting, they said, "Imagine the kids who are coming through the second, third..." It might have been you, Dennis, or Mike, I forget. Somebody said, "Imagine when these kids get to our high school program, how different their experience is going to be." It's, it's a transformative time in our district for these students, and the introduction of technology in support of education is just enriching the experience for our students, just taking us to another level. And in years down the road, we're going to see the fruits of that effort.
Excellent.
I thought that was a very pointed...
That segue into...
Right to you.
A short report on, I think, a question has come up about this very exciting program. I know Mike is very excited about the new Future Cycle courses at Ramapo Ridge and the way that this was come to be a very collaborative approach with very multidisciplinary. So I thought I did, on behalf of Dr. Dittoro, we asked Ron Corey to prepare a little kind of explanation summary of what that is. So I'm going to just read briefly what the new Future Cycle courses are going to be. And this will be, they're going to be writing the curriculum over the summer, and this is going to start in September, in the fall. They're going to be prepared. So again, preliminary, this is, you know, the stuff we're starting with. And then we'll have a more detailed report, say, late fall, one... once this all starts at Ramapo Ridge, okay? "The updating of the Ridge's cycle courses is aligned with the current district's technology goals as well as the ongoing development of the pathways program at Mawa High School. Revamping the menu of exploratory courses was identified as an opportunity to strengthen the continuum of grade six to 12 offerings and to create a balanced program of studies that is appropriate for middle school students in the areas of STEAM, like our building, and the humanities." So, there's two cycles that have three-part series each. The first cycle with a three-part series is going to have, that's the STEAM series, again, aligning well with what they're going to be experiencing at the high school. And those courses are called Dress Code, code emphasized for grade six, Mind and Bot, grade seven, and R3, grade eight. These courses will be homegrown STEAM courses that have been envisioned as feeder programs to courses in the Mawa High School Program of Studies. So, Dress Code is going to employ maker principles as students design wearable technologies and utilize Arduino programs. Mind and Bot is a robotics-based course. R3 stands for, we're all about the three, T3, R3.
On purpose.
Okay. Rethink, reimagine, redesign. And that's going to expose students to 3D software design, collaborative teaming, and engineering design. Okay, so that's one series. The second series that also has three pieces is titled Image, Sound, and Story. And the courses here were developed by the Jacob Burns Film Center. So, this is going to offer sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum with hands-on project work based on the learning framework provided by the Film Center. Very interesting. Then, the other course is going to be Digi App, where it's, again, homegrown course. Students are going to learn how to actively digest digital content and interpret it through a critical lens. And then the last one, so there's eight total, three in the first series, three in the second, Digi App, and then Project Citizen, which is going to explore how to be active citizens through action research projects. They will identify problems, conduct research, create solutions, and present findings using current social, political, and economic issues. So, all of these eight new courses are going to foster innovative, forward-thinking, and responsive modern learning experiences designed to help Ridge students explore future pathways and pursuits. All right, thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Dittoro, and we'll kind of have a little more. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to Dr. Dittoro or Brian Corey if you want any further explanation. Thank you. Did he put it up there? Is it on the technology? And thanks for the presentation. I think it was very good. Thank you.
And I think we, I just want to highlight, I think, 17DD, the award of the security vestibules. That's sort of the last of the big pieces of our security infrastructure that's going to be in place. We're going to be keeping Greg Romero very busy this summer, overseeing a whole bunch of projects that will continue to enhance the depth of our security initiatives here.
Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or non-Agenda items?
Yes. So, I'm a little biased, I guess, but I do have a graduating senior. But I just wanted to say that the senior awards night was last night, and it was fabulous. The caliber of students that are coming through our schools and who are really outstanding, and not just academically, areas of music, art, engineering, design, and physical education, really covering, really mind-body, the whole person. It was very impressive. A lot of scholarships that were given and a lot of academic awards. I just wanted to congratulate all the seniors and wish them all the best as they graduate next week.
Anyone else? May I, I'd like to take Old Business. May I have a motion to move on that? 16A, Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Morthee.
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes. Now, I'd like a motion to proceed on New Business. We'll take A through B, B, D, D, E, E, and we're going to take 17-CC out and vote on that separately. May I have a motion to proceed? Mr. Kizmarsky, seconded by Ms. Secone. Do we have any comments on any of these Agenda items? Okay, could you please take roll call on these items?
Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, but I will be abstaining on Item 17A, check number 095223.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes. Now, I would like to take 17-CC separately. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Dr. Morthee, seconded by Mr. DeSilva. Mr. Gallo, would you like to?
So, I have a preliminary statement before we take action on this. The Negotiations Committee of the Board... The Negotiations Committee of the Board unanimously concurs with the superintendent's recommendation that the board approve Item 17-CC, propose successor contract with the Mawa Education Association with a four-year term starting July 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2023. There are many positive aspects of the new agreement. Higher starting salaries for teachers, simplification of terms and conditions, a new salary guide for secretaries reflecting market conditions, higher limits on tuition reimbursement, et cetera, et cetera. All good things. But the most important outcome was the process itself. The MEA team and the Board Negotiations Committee put our common interest first, which established the mutual respect necessary for constructive negotiation process. We began with an informal icebreaker in December to introduce the team members to each other. We discussed the importance of communication, open, honest, respectful, and throughout the process, everyone abided by this ground rule. We also agreed that we wanted to address issues in a way that provided long-term solutions, not just short-term fixes that would pass an issue to future negotiators. We agreed that everything was open to discussion. After our first formal meeting in January, there was some hesitancy about the pace of the meeting schedule, but within a short time, the teams embraced meeting as often as possible. That confidence arose out of the trust that developed in the group. When the negotiations turned to wages and benefits, we continued to find common ground and worked to identify approaches that respected and reflected each team's most important concerns. Throughout the process, the approach of working from common interests to specific issues moved the negotiations process forward. And this is my embarrassing Hank comment. But during the process, Hank was our barometer. And every time we sort of got into a jam or we resolved something, Hank would say, "Trending up," and we would continue. But if Hank did not give the trending up signal, we would dig back in. And so, I didn't want to embarrass him, but that was a key factor because what it did is it immediately got everybody to face what was on the table, as opposed to sort of dancing around. And it was an important part of the process that kept the dialogue going. And I just wanted to highlight that without making Hank feel shit. The review of the terms and conditions resulted in eliminating about 25% of the text in the current agreement. About 75 items were put on the table from both sides, which resulted in 56 changes to the contract, from simple updates to more substantive changes, by far the most comprehensive reform of the contract in at least 20 years. We spent considerable time reinforcing and clarifying best practices with an emphasis on professional development and maintaining ongoing dialogue to address emerging issues. We clarified and simplified wherever possible. The wage and benefit settlement is in line with settlements reached with peer districts. The MEA Negotiations Committee took the approach from the outset that we wanted a comprehensive agreement that included salary guides. Higher starting salaries, a more equitable teacher salaries guide, an entirely new guide for secretaries, simplification of guide movement rules, the elimination of two salary steps on the teacher's guide, and restructuring of the longevity compensation are some of the key highlights. The current rule is governing health insurance costs sharing remain in place. This is a substantial commitment of our citizens' resources, but one that supports Mawa's ability to recruit, develop, and retain the best teachers and support staff for our students. We have many people to thank for their contributions to this process, from the MEA, Andy Butel, Hank Kipers, Mike Doris, Rich Gordon, Bill Howe, Christine Noonan, Jen Ehrenberg, Ursula Urzar, Jennifer Fitzgerald, and from our central staff, Dennis Fair, Kyle, were instrumental, our district administrators, who we went back to numerous times for clarification, Rick DeSilva from our committee, Dr. Primor Morthee, and Ben Kizmarsky. Each person played an important role in getting to this happy day. Sometimes people come to our meetings and they think, "Oh, we're just, we just vote yes on Item 17A through JJ," whatever it is. This is one of those things where a lot of activity was happening behind the scenes. I think we met 10 or 12 times in addition to meetings that we had separately for meeting just with the MEA. There was a tremendous amount of work that occurred with a whole bunch of folks, MEA staff members, our staff members, and the people I mentioned. This is really sort of the work that goes unrecognized many times, that happens behind the scenes, but so important to the success of our district. And I just wanted to recognize all those folks who made that happen. That is my report.
Thank you, and what a wonderful report it was. Thank you very much.
Kim, real quick, I just want to...
Yes.
He said it, like, what he said, but I want to...
But he's going to simplify it.
I am going to simplify it. This is how it's supposed to go. This process was how it's supposed to go. This was, it was straight up, face-to-face, adult conversations, some real hard conversations across the table, but nobody waved the white flag. Nobody said, "You know what? We got to step back." We dug in. We stayed in the same room. We had the conversations. This is how it's supposed to go, and I'm incredibly proud of what we're about to vote on. So, thank you, guys, and thank our committee.
Yeah, you noticed I didn't mention any lawyers in our list of thank yous because from the beginning, we said, "We're going to work this out ourselves."
Yep.
Because we have to live with the agreement. At the end of the day, it's the consultants or the lawyers, whoever you bring in, they're just third-party people. They're on the payroll to do that. And, you know, we both thought face-to-face worked, and obviously, in this situation, it worked very successfully. Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo, would you mind reading the resolution for us before we vote upon it?
Certainly. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Mawa Board of Education approves the agreement between the Mawa Education Association and the Mawa Board of Education for the period July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2023.
Thank you. May I have a motion to proceed? We already did a motion to proceed on this. All right. Would you please take roll call?
Mr. DeSilva?
Oops, no, yes. Yes.
That was not a trending up, Brad.
Mr. Gallo?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Wholehearted yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
It's all you.
A resounding yes.
Still very proud of our negotiating team and the MEA for working together and smoothly getting this contract signed. Thank you very much. Andy, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So, a lot of what I'll say will echo what Mike and Rick said. But on behalf of the Mawa Education Association, I would like to publicly thank the members of the board's negotiation team for their work in reaching this agreement. Mr. Gallo, Dr. Morthee, Mr. DeSilva, Mr. Kizmarsky, as well as Mr. Bleeker, Mr. Fair, thank you. After cycles of contentious negotiations between the association and the board, we set out to do things differently this time around. And from the start, there was a mutual interest in settling a fair contract on time and a mutual willingness to negotiate in good faith. We sought to conduct negotiations like they should be done, sitting across the table from one another, asking and answering, clarifying questions, being willing to compromise, and finding creative solutions. And we were able to do that all, as was said, without bringing lawyers or mediators to the table. As with any negotiations, neither side got everything they wanted, and there were several areas of disagreement. But unlike in the past, we were able to talk through these disagreements in a collegial, respectful, and professional manner. I've heard from so many of my colleagues that they cannot remember the last time a contract was settled on time, nor one that was negotiated this amicably. And that's a testament to the work done on both sides. You've demonstrated through this agreement that you truly value the staff members of this great district and see us as the dedicated professionals that we are. It's our hope that through this process, we've established a new precedent for future negotiations, but also that we don't limit our collaboration to only negotiations. We should continuously seek out ways to work together to provide the best possible education for our students and to ensure that this district continues to be one that attracts and retains high-quality staff members. We look forward to formally signing the agreement on the last day of school and celebrating a great year together. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to move on 18A through Y. A motion to proceed. Mr. Kizmarsky, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Do we have any comments on any of these Agenda items? Anyone on the board? Okay, Mr. Bleeker, would you please take roll call?
Okay. Mr. DeSilva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Morthee?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes. Okay, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. DeSilva, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Fiesen, 20 Falcon Court, Mawa, New Jersey. Tomorrow night, most probably, the town council will adopt many, many changes to the zoning laws in our town. This is all a result of the settlement that was done on the affordable housing situation in Mawa many months ago. But this is the very first concrete step in the settlement process. Once the zoning laws are changed, then developers can start to come in with plans and drawings, and actual construction will follow very quickly. Our town will grow by about 10%. 800 new units will be built at the Crossroads property in addition to 300,000 square feet of retail space. It'll be mixed-use. There'll be seven buildings, 800 units, which are apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments, and there'll be a certain amount of those for low-income housing or affordable housing. And this is, I kind of relate this to a woman saying, "Hey, I'm pregnant." That's like the settlement. Nothing changes. But now the baby has been brought home, and everything changes. So, the baby's been brought home. Tomorrow night, they'll change all the zoning laws to accommodate the situation. And probably within three to five years, we'll have 10% more people in Mawa. My point is that many people in the town will wonder, "Well, what's the impact on the town?" Emergency services, obviously, but what about the schools? And I'm very, very concerned and kind of frightened that the communication from the elected officials has to be dramatic to indicate to the township residents what's happening and why is it happening. You know, when you say the words "affordable housing," people think of low-income housing, or poor people, or slums, or whatever. You know, 1,000 people hear the words "affordable housing," and 1,000 people will have all kinds of different thoughts. So, I went to the council meeting this Monday, and at the end of it, I said, "This is a very big deal, and you need to really communicate to the residents what's happening, why is it happening, what's the impact, et cetera, et cetera. Will my taxes go up?" I mean, people will have all kinds of crazy ideas. So, I appeal to you that you focus on this issue because we need a good PR campaign that will indicate to the residents what's happening, why, what's the impact on... that will indicate to the residents what's happening, why, what's the impact on the whole school district. And I hope it all works out, because you can get a lot of rumors, you know, and people say, "Well, it's on the website." Well, no one's gonna go to the website. You know, I wish we would have town hall meetings where residents can just show up and ask questions after a very professional presentation. So, I just wanna raise a little yellow flag, that this is all coming down the pipe now. The baby's here, and the board and the council, I think, need to really put forth a great PR effort to indicate to everybody, this is what Mawa's gonna look like in three to five years, and how that will impact you, and me, and taxes, and everything else. So, that's my two cents on that subject.
Thank you very much.
The other thing, the STEAM program, I've always loved it right from the very beginning, and I was here when it was voted on and everything else. Will a big fanfare event occur where this comes out and fireworks and everything else?
Fireworks? That's a really good idea. Yes, yeah, our plan, and we were starting to discuss briefly, and we'll include certainly the board with all of this, is in September. When the building is up and operational, we'll do vote.
People can go in and look around.
People will go in, we're gonna bury the time capsule at the same time we're doing all of that all together. The band will be there, the fireworks have to work out.
Well, fireworks, you can now buy at ShopRite. You know, we could all have a sparkle or something.
Air Force flyby?
Air Force One drones, the whole thing, but yes, and the community will be certainly invited to that.
Great, because I haven't really seen anything in the paper or anything, so...
The facility is awesome. Right now, it's getting there.
It's really coming together.
It's really coming together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bleeker.
Oh, boy, you didn't get our postcard? Good job, Linda.
That's why you run the community.
Do we have any other, any one that would like to say anything else? Okay, may I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, second by Dr. Morthee, and meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you. We actually need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we didn't say, ask for a motion to adjourn?
All second. All in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.